We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance followed by invocation by Commissioner Dries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All as we come together as Fannie County Commissioners, we ask your guidance in the decisions we make today for the benefit of our community. We also give you thanks for this Lenten season. It's just a few days left and help bring us all closer to you, Lord. And lastly, Lord, please grant us some moisture in this part of the world. We're really dry. Rain preferably, but I'll even take snow. So in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Amen.
Morning, everyone. I do not have any chair comments this morning, so we'll move immediately to the consent agenda. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have quite a few people in the audience today. Is anyone here to address the commission in public comment? Please move, come up to the microphone. We have technology today. Commissioner Halber, former commissioner.
I just want to thank the Commissioners and your staff for the surveying the county. That doesn't mean, though, that I agree with you at all.
He has my phone number, by the way.
Is he one of your constituents?
Yes, he is. No, it's always.
I take it you don't want the snow. I take it you didn't want the snow.
For all those watching our meeting today, that was former Commissioner Roman Halber, and thank you for your kind words.
He was my predecessor.
Well, he's your constituent. Why don't you keep him happy?
I work on it. Now, we always have good conversations.
We'll move then directly into the business items. And this morning, the first thing that we have is the first portion of AFAC funds. And Danielle Burke from the city, Assistant City Manager.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. The first item before you here this morning is alcohol fund advisory committee funds. This, in the last couple of years, has been split up into two different processes. So this first item before you is that first process that is managed by staff. So as you will recall, these dollars have to be used and distributed in accordance with KSA seventy-nine dash forty-one A O four, which creates the Alcohol Liquor Fund. And really, those dollars have to be used for things related to alcohol and drug use prevention, education, that sort of thing. So staff reviews these applications. This year, for the first half of the AFAC funds that are available, there were a total of eight agencies that requested forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Typically, between the city and the county, we set aside a total of fifty thousand dollars. And so you can see those eight agencies that had applied for funding. All of these requests have to be under six thousand dollars. Once they go over that six thousand dollar threshold, then they get kicked over to the second part of our process will be, which will be your next item before you hear this morning. So with that, historically, the city and county have split the cost of AFAC awards, with the city being responsible for ninety percent of those awards and the county commission being responsible for the remaining ten percent. So in this case, that would be four thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. The city commission has already reviewed these applications at their last meeting on March fifth and did recommend fully funding all eight applicants. So there are three alternatives before you hear this morning. The first one is to approve staff's recommendation to fully fund all eight applicants. The second would be to amend staff's recommendation, and then the third would be to provide staff with alternative direction. Staff recommends the governing body approve alternative one, which the fiscal impact of that would be four thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions from the commission?
Not a question. Now, for the public's benefit, would you kind of elaborate on how, where these monies come from?
Yeah, absolutely. So these are dollars that anytime somebody goes to purchase alcoholic beverages at a liquor store or something like that, there's an additional tax tied to those dollars. Those dollars then come back to the city and county and go into one of three places. So one of them is this alcoholic liquor funds, which state statute dictates how we can spend those dollars. The other one is special recreation, which again, there are some parameters for how we can spend those dollars. And then the other third goes into the general fund. So this is very specifically and narrowly focused on kind of drug, education, prevention, those types of activities.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep. You're very welcome.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
My, mine, and again, for the public's knowledge, the screening of these applications was done by?
By, so in this case, for the first round, these applicants that come in and request six thousand dollars or less, that's done by staff. And then the next round is done by the Livwell Fannie County Board.
I guess what I was getting to, and I'm sorry I didn't make it clear, when you say staff, county and city staff or just city staff or?
So typically, we have just had city staff review these applications. Certainly open if county staff would like to join in that certainly would.
But again, I would just for clarity and transparency.
Yes, it is city staff that review them.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion if you're ready.
I am ready.
To approve her alternative one for the funding.
Is there a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve the funding as recommended by the staff recommendation. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second portion of the AFAC funds, Ms. Burke?
Yep. So again, comes from the same place. This is just for any application that we receive that exceeds that six thousand dollar threshold. So for this year, we had one application from Big Brothers, Big Sisters for twenty-five thousand dollars. And this is reviewed by the Livwell Fannie County Board. And so they reviewed this application, recommended full funding. The city commission at their last meeting also approved and recommended full funding of that application. Again, ninety-ten split between the city and the county, which would make the county's portion two thousand, five hundred dollars. Your alternatives are the same for this item. And again, staff would recommend approval of the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the application for Big Brothers.
Second. Right, it's been moved and seconded that the governing body approve the recommendation from the Livwell Board to fully fund Big Brothers and Big Sisters at twenty-five thousand, the county part being two thousand, five hundred dollars. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Daniel.
Wonderful. Thanks.
Now we see why former Commissioner Halber was here, not just to give us some words of advice. John?
Good morning. Prostate surveying is requesting to plat the Halber Fields addition. The property is generally located at sixty-two seventy Old Post Road. The Halber Fields addition will have two lots. Lot one, block one, contains eight point zero five seven acres, and lot two, block one, contains one hundred and thirty-four point three four seven acres. Both lots will be used for residential purposes. Lot one is zoned L R low-density residential and currently contains a home on the property with several accessory structures. A portion of lot two is currently zoned L R low-density residential and A agricultural district. Lot two contains a home on the property with three accessory structures. The third submittal was presented for plat review on March seventh and met requirements. The planning commission recommended approval of the plat on December twenty-first of two thousand, twenty-three, and there are two alternatives. The governing body may approve the parcel plat, or the governing body may not approve the parcel plat. And staff recommends alternative one, approval of the parcel plat.
Thank you. I want to give Mr. Halber a chance. You started to get up. Do you have anything you want to add to this?
No.
All right. Questions then for John? All right. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation on the Alber parcel plat? Fields addition.
I would so move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve this parcel plat. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll sign the plat. Next, John, you have again the stage for a waiver request on three thousand and six West Jones. Please.
Ivan Gutierrez is requesting a waiver to allow for off-site advertisement at the property generally located at, located at three thousand and six West Jones Avenue. The property is currently zoned G C general commercial district and contains one point one six acres. There are two buildings and an existing sign frame on the property. The applicant is wanting to allow off-site advertisement on this property to help support local businesses in the community. The applicant is proposing eight different sign slots on the existing sign frame. The current off-site advertisement regulations in section twenty-four point zero nine zero, section six of the Fannie County zoning regulations are as follows, and they're listed down below, items A through H. If the waiver is requested, if the waiver request is granted, the applicant will be required to obtain a sign permit and have a licensed sign installer to install the signs. There are two alternatives. The governing body may approve the waiver, or the governing body may not approve the waiver. And staff is unable to recommend approval of the waiver request. And we do have the applicant here as well for any questions.
All right. First questions of Joan, and then we'll ask the applicant to address the commission.
And you said the new signs will be professionally installed. I mean?
Yeah, with a licensed sign installer. Correct.
Is that it?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, my question, I had a complaint issued to me over a cup of coffee last week, and it, it was with regard to the city, not the county. But they were asking for a waiver with regard to signs and so forth. And I don't know when this was. It might have been quite some time ago. And it was not, they were not permitted to have the waiver. So I get concerned, and I know we've talked about this before in our meetings, when we start getting exceptions to the rule, and the exceptions are more than
Yeah.
than what abides by the rules. So I understand, you know, the predicament, so to speak, that you're in as far as making any recommendation. But any other additional comments from your perspective with regard to waivers and not granting waivers, and just from a general perspective?
I'd say I have the same thing as you. It's, I'm on the fence, so.
Yeah, thank you.
John, the picture that we have in our packet, is this the sign that we are wanting to waive, or is it a new construction sign of similar design?
So that's the existing sign, and then they're just wanting to add different slots onto it, different panels onto it.
Okay, it seems to me that there's four in existence. They want to add two, four more?
Two in existence, it looks like. I think.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out what kind of sign we're going to put in here.
So there are four by eight slots. There's currently one sign left. This was taken off of Google, Google Maps. This is Lou Boltinghouse's old properties. And this sign has been there for, since Lou's owned it, since we bought it back in, I think we bought that property in like oh-eight, and we've had the shops for over twenty, the other shop, my dad's body shop. We're looking to add two signs at the bottom. That way we can fulfill eight, but it currently has six slots as we speak. The, the sign is a ways back, so it won't, and maybe you can help me out with this. It won't affect traffic. Did you guys look into that?
It's not within the site triangle, the twenty-five foot side triangles.
And are you going to advertise for your, you or your father's own business that you own there or somebody else?
It'll be off-site marketing. I will advertise my business that's not on there, but my dad already has a place for him to advertise his business on his, on the three oh, three zero zero two property. He already has a sign for his. So this would just be, I'm trying to help promote one lawyer, one insurance agent, one real estate agent, AJ Graphics, because they do all my, all my signs. And I've already made a deal and have paid them to go ahead and do all the signs for me, four by eights. They're going to be metal, the thickest metal that they, that they could come up with. I think it was, the first one was quarter inch. This one had to have been five eighths, maybe. I think that's the thickness of the metal. We're going to get, you know, licensed contractors to help us out. It already has existing lines for light, but we're going to, you know, get that refreshed and put new lights up and stuff.
All right, very good. Other questions from the Commissioners?
Could he please state his name for the?
Oh.
My name?
Yes.
For, good morning. My name's Ivan Gutierrez, for those that don't know me. I'm a former chamber ambassador, and I serve on the board for Leadership Garden City. I know when Senator Moran was in here, he was talking about getting new leadership in here. You know, I'm one of the guy, the few guys that have stayed around. Most people come to garden, they graduate, and they never come back. I'm one of the few that stuck around, you know. This right here would be a huge incentive for not only business owners in the community, but for myself to want to stick around Garden City and try to have this town prosper. I'm really passionate about Garden City, and, and I'm passionate about my culture as well. I'm trying to see how we can make people feel inclusive, included, and, and, you know, but still stick to our core values. And, and with that being said, if there's any other questions, I'm willing to answer.
Ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, I am.
I move that we grant the waiver. I think as long as the signs are professionally done as presented, I have no problem with them.
Does your motion include the other suggested restrictions John stated?
Yes.
His recommendation. That's A through H, correct? Yes, sir.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I have a question. I don't know whether it's before the second or after the second.
It's right now. Wouldn't you want to?
Well, Lon mentioned protocol, if you will. I think if we ponder backwards, not too many years ago, we had a person standing here at the podium from the co-op wanting to put a sign out on, along eighty-three highway for the tennis elevator or the Gano, whatever. And we approved that. So that was off-site. What he was asking was a bigger sign. He wanted a four by eight. And, and we approved that waiver. But that is off-site advertising because co-op doesn't own that corner where the sign is. So the, with that statement, I can understand the city's concern about having signs all over. I don't know that we have a big problem in the county, so I'm going to offer a second.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. It's been moved and seconded to approve the sign waiver with the conditions A through H as presented by staff. Is there any further comments? All right. We'll hear from McKenzie while the motion's pending.
McKenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. I just wanted to clarify that if you do approve it with it meeting A through H as listed in the packet, he would not be, he would not be able to meet those standards with the sign that he's proposing. So if you look at letter A, it says that the lot shall not contain any existing structures. Well, the lot currently does contain structures. Then C, you can have no more than one off-site advertising sign. This would be eight signs. So I'm just clarifying that what you're proposing, he would not be able to do what this waiver is asking.
Thank you for stepping up and providing that wisdom.
Well, it has been moved and seconded to propose the approval of the waiver with the conditions A through H and seconded. It calls for a vote unless the motion is withdrawn.
Maybe we need to look at the exceptions.
All right.
Before, I'll withdraw it. We want to look at the exceptions if second agrees.
You're withdrawing?
Just until we look at the, all the exceptions, exceptions that were pointed.
And I have no, no second, so I'll withdraw it.
Okay, all right. No motions pending then. Having been withdrawn, it's back to you, John, to explain to us what limits, if any, we should put on this waiver.
So we're waiving these items, A through H, for the, for the off-site.
So let's be clear. We're waiving all of those requirements and allowing the eight signs as proposed.
Correct. That's what.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I, yeah, I wasn't reading it that way either, but.
That sign's been there, I don't know how many years, and it hadn't created any great big problem that I'm aware of. We don't, don't have any history of a lot of motor vehicle crashes or anything because that sign's there, do we?
If we do, we're going to blame Lou. Larry, Commissioner Jones?
Okay. If, if we, even though McKenzie pointed out these things don't qualify, that's why we're waiving them.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. I reinstated my original motion then. Well, but the, the motion would be to waive A through H.
Yes.
Right, which before you were, it was including, but so. Yeah, we're waiving all of them. Okay.
All right, the motion is that we are going to approve the waiver and waive A through H.
Oh, second.
That's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience. McKenzie, thanks for the assistance. Next on our agenda is to hear from Economic Development. Tell us what's going on.
Good morning.
Morning.
Lana Devol, Fannie County Economic Development. Lots of things going on. We, we are having really good conversations related to commercial properties, which is exciting to have some new commercial interests, which is retail, which seems to be what makes people the happiest, is when they get retail and restaurants. Industrial-wise, we do have some good things happening there as well. We've been pretty cautious about going after large employers while we wait for Empirical to get opened up and make sure that they get fully staffed before we bring new competition to the labor market. But we are starting to have some of those conversations a little more in earnest now as Empirical is getting closer and is staffing up. So I had told you all that we were going to schedule a tour of the Empirical facility as soon as they were ready for us. We had hoped that that might be in March or April. It will not be in March or April. I spoke with them last week, and they've asked that we hold off a little bit longer while they get some more of the internal work done. They said they could take in, but you're not going to see much that is, is going to make sense until they get a little more of that work done. So I haven't forgotten you. We'll still get you in the building just as quickly as we can. And probably what we're spending a very good percentage of our time on right now is university education, four-year degrees and advanced degrees beyond that as well. So you'll continue to see us talking pretty highly about some of the universities we've had really good success with. Newman University, this morning, as you guys are aware, has Senator Moran over speaking about their expansion into the marketplace, and we're working with some other universities as well. So happy to answer any questions you have. If you don't have any, I'll zoom across town for the Newman announcements.
Well, I think you ought to get going, but Commissioners, do you have anything for Lana? Yes, sir.
On the news last week, Lana, it was a kind of a devastating news break about a Tyson pork plant closing. And if you look online, several Tyson plants are, are closing, readjusting to the, to the slowing meat market. Is there any, any word here that we, we need to be aware of or where we might, might encourage Tyson to stay here?
Certainly you would know. If there was, if there were grave concerns related to Tyson, we would absolutely bring those to you. We have a very good working relationship with Tyson. They reach out to us just about any time they have a challenge, whether that's something external or internal. There absolutely are changes in that, in that protein market, if you will. Commissioner Larry Jones could sure tell you about, about a lot of those changes that are taking place. You know, the pandemic brought about some change in how folks are looking at protein. And there are more and more folks coming to the table who are doing processing of beef and pork, more on a cooperative type basis, if you will, where producers are coming together. We've kind of come full circle. If you guys remember, that's how our first beef harvest facility was, was put together, was as a cooperative model. We're starting to see some of that come back. Whether or not that model will, will continue and whether or not it will be sustainable for those groups is hard to say. But right now Tyson is operating on, on lower hours. So that happens pretty frequently in their, in their industry where they slow things down, speed things up, depending on, on what the market looks like. I think we may see some fallout from the fires that we saw down in Texas. That absolutely is going to change beef production and alter those numbers. So we could see some changes there. But again, if there were, if there were a crisis you needed to be aware of that we were aware of, we would absolutely bring you in the loop on that.
I think with the, speaking of fires, really, the, maybe the fire at Tyson was a blessing as they spent a lot of time updating. As they spent a lot of time updating that facility. And it's, they've invested in it heavily. So I, you know, I don't anticipate, you know, sure, they cut hours back, you know, it's all due to marketing and supplies. But I don't see them closing a facility like that, that they've got invested this kind of time and money.
As a reminder, this community was a lot of why they invested those dollars. That would have been, a fire like that would have been a prime opportunity for them to walk away from the market. And they chose not to do that largely because of the response of this community. When, you know, when their corporate folks pulled into town and they saw yard signs everywhere and people wearing T-shirts that, that were expressing our support for them, that absolutely resonated with them.
Anything further?
No, I appreciate her.
We need to send this representative to Glad Hand with Senator Moran.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on our business agenda, we'll hear from the Health Department. You're going to help me better pronounce your last name. I got Shruti down. And help me, is it Cabra?
Chabra.
Chabra.
Good morning.
Good morning, Shruti. How are you? What can we do for you?
I'm here to request you to, the board, to sign the, our application for the KDHE annual grants that we apply for. We usually apply for five grants that help us sustain our, our clinic and outreach health promotion functions. And the, the grants that we have been applying for over the last few years are Family Planning, Maternal and Child Health, Immunization Action Plan, Public Health Emergency Preparedness and State Formula. And these are the applications we will be making this year.
I'm looking at the signature page. It's four hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and forty dollars of grant application.
Yes. The, this amount, the amount for the Family Planning and, and maternal and child health, we usually do not get the amount that is requested. We get a percentage of that. So the, and this, like, we will be applying for this amount, but the, the amount that we will be receiving will be a little bit lower than this.
Questions for the Health Department?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Shruti, how does that, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, if that's, you know, how does that compare to last year?
So it, it's, so for these five grants, this is approximately the same that we had applied for last year.
The state's staying pretty stable with funding?
It is anticipated to change starting this year and moving into the next year for Family Planning and Maternal and Child Health Grants. For the State Formula Grant, there has been a consistent increase every year, but that depends on the, on the, on whatever the state legislator approves or whatever the government, governor decides.
Mr. Chairman, this being what we might call a regular request, I'm going to offer a motion to approve her request that we have her try to seek those funds again.
Will you, will your motion also authorize me to sign the?
Yeah, yeah.
Second.
Do you guys need to convene into the local Board of Health for this approval? It does call for the local Board of Health.
That's right.
Signature, so I believe that you will need to.
Mr. Chairman, I move we convene local Board of Health.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we take a recess from the regular session and convene the Finney County Local Board of Health. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now undertaking the job and duty of the local Board of Health. Commissioner Jones, do you have, your motion is to approve this and to have the chairman sign the application?
That is correct, correct.
Is there a second?
That was my second, yes.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve and sign the grant application as proposed. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Motion to reconvene or adjourn as a Board of Health.
So move.
Second. Been seconded and stereo to adjourn as a local Board of Health. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We're back in regular session from our recess. Anything else, Shruti?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on our business agenda is architectural approval for JDC retrofit. Good morning. We'll hear from our JDC Director, Beth Bev. Tell everybody what's going on.
Good morning, Commissioners, and I also have Mr. Nemec here if you have any questions. This morning, I'm requesting the Board consider utilizing GMC and Architects to retrofit half of the emergency shelter back to detention beds. In 2018, as a bit of a background, GMC and Architects was the architecture firm that did the design for the JDC when it converted from JDC to the emergency shelter.
All right. Questions for Beth? My question is cost. What's it going to cost?
Right now, approximately it's fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars to utilize GMC in.
Approximately down to the dollar? Do you have any pennies?
Do you have any pennies?
All right. Very good. Questions for Beth?
Well, mine is related to the financial part of it because I didn't see it on our information here. More to the administrator or Beth. That comes from what fund? That from, from your operating fund or?
It'll come from the JDC Fund, Building Fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Can you state the amount again, please, Beth?
Fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the request for architectural services for JDC. Second?
Been moved and seconded to approve expenditure from JDC's budget of fifteen, three thirty-five to retrofit JDC back to detention beds. I would note for those who are listening that this would give us an opportunity to get back into revenue enhancement for JDC by utilizing these funds or these beds and space and area. And this, this is also in response to a change in the law from the legislature with regard to the housing and detention of juveniles. And Commissioner Dries, you have a comment, sir?
This is for one half of the facility, not the whole facility?
Not the whole facility, just one pod of the two.
Right, it's, how many beds?
Seven beds.
It's actually a half of a half, is it not? Isn't it?
One-third.
Okay.
Did you have a comment, County Councilor?
I just believe in the alternatives on this one, it was asking for authorization for the county administrator to sign that agreement following review by myself. So I guess just asking if you're authorizing that signature upon review by the county councilor.
Well, let's ask the person who made the motion.
That would be fine. Yes.
Second?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that authorize county staff to engage Gibson-Mancini for the purpose of designing the changeover, authorize the administrator to sign the agreement following or following approval by the county councilor's review. Is there any further discussion on the pending motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Larry?
I don't have the larger touch.
Okay, next on our business agenda is to hear from Larry Brungart, the right-of-way supervisor regarding 2024 crack ceiling bids. Good morning.
Larry's, Larry's grown just a little.
Yeah, any?
Good morning, Commissioners. Larry is helping set up voting booths, so I will be presenting today. I'm Kenneth Jones, the Public Works Operations Coordinator. The Board of County Commissioners is asked to consider and approve awarding the bid to B&amp;H Paving for the spring 2024 crack ceiling project. The Public Works Department advertised for the 2024 crack ceiling project on February eighth of twenty-three, twenty-four. February eighth of twenty-four, bids were open at eleven a.m. on March eleventh of twenty-four at the Public Works Office. One bid was received from B&amp;H Paving of Scott City, Kansas for a hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine ninety-seven and fifty cents. Approximately thirty-three miles of road are planned to be cracked sealed this year, including Jones Avenue, Rachel Road, Gano Road, Tennis Road, Six Mile Road and River Road. Alternatives for the Board of County Commissioners may accept this bid from B&amp;H Paving and authorize the chairman to sign the contract or to the Board of County Commissioners may reject the bid from B&amp;H Paving. Staff recommends alternative one to accept the bid from B&amp;H Paving and authorize the chairman to sign the contract. The fiscal impact of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents will be paid out of the Roden Bridge budget.
Questions for Mr. Brungart's presenter today?
One quick question. The, the potholes that we've developed over the winter, will you try to fill those before you crack?
They will be filled before, before they seal it.
And Mr. Chairman, my, my question, Kaylee, is this thirty-three miles, that's about what we do each year, is about thirty miles?
It's not where we have been, but it's where we're going to try to get from now on, yes.
Well, I need to make sure that everyone who lives in Sagebrush and Southwest, that we're going to get crack ceiling done. Is what you're telling us.
Yes.
I can, what's your personal number so I can have those? And they all want to know when we're going to get our crack ceiling.
You know, when they ask me, I simply refer them back to you.
Thanks. So this isn't the year that that's going to happen, but it's within our budget to be able to do the items and the projects that you have outlined. And I ask for you to make sure that we get those potholes fixed before we do the ceiling. Mr. Jones is more familiar in that area and this is also in Commissioner Davy Jones's district of most of the, what you're talking about, a little bit in mine. But I really appreciate the heads up on what we're doing. Has there been a motion made to approve this?
Not yet, but I have a question, please.
Go, sir.
Has, B&amp;H is a firm that you've dealt with before, have they not?
Yes, they're, they're regulars at this for us.
And the one, one bid is not unusual because?
So that, in 2023, this project was a dollar fifty-eight per pound for the material. This year it's a dollar sixty-seven, so there's a nine cent raise for the product. But I researched this because we do have a crack seal machine that's pretty much outdated and stuff. But they're, they're very in line with, we couldn't do it for that with the amount of time it would take, the manpower and stuff.
You're ready for a motion?
I am, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the expenditure of alternative one, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars, fifty cents to come out of the Roden Bridge budget and that the chairman be authorized to sign.
Sign the contract with B&amp;H Paving and I would second.
Thank you for the detailed motion and, and second, is there any further discussion on the pending matter before the board? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. I'll sign the contract.
Thank you.
That's just a five percent raise, that's not bad in this day and age.
No.
Same can be said for my house. All right, next on our business agenda this morning is the Finney County Solid Waste Management, and we will hear from McKenzie Phillips. Please address those viewing and good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. McKenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So this morning, you were asked to consider and approve the annual, annual review of, it's actually the 2024, not the 2023 Finney County Solid Waste Management Plan and the updated committee members. So KSA sixty-five dash thirty-four zero five requires the development of a county or a regional waste management plan and then an update to that plan at least every five years. The Solid Waste Management Plan is a comprehensive plan that includes current waste management information for each of the solid waste management programs within Finney County. So each year, the Solid Waste Management Committee is required to do an annual review and report those review results to the Board of County Commissioners. So this review took place on March eighth of 2024. During the committee meeting, there were no changes that were brought up that needed to be made except for an update to the committee list. So the updates to the committee list include removing Tim Livermore, Robin Luhon and Curtis Loggson from the list and then adding the, adding Andy Herman from the city of Garden City. He's the Assistant Solid Waste Superintendent. Tony Forzin, which is the city superintendent for the city of Holcomb. Kenneth Jones, which is the Public Works Operations Coordinator for Finney County. And then myself, McKenzie Phillips, the Development and Administrative Coordinator for Finney County. So this year is the last year of our previous five-year plan. Going into, throughout this year, we will be preparing for the update for the 2025 five-year annual plan. So you will be getting updates on that probably later this year. So the alternatives before you today are the Board of County Commissioners may approve the annual review of the Finney County Solid Waste Management Plan and the updates made to the list of the committee members. Or the Board may not approve the annual review and the updates made to the committee list. And staff recommends alternative one to approve the annual review and the updates to the committee members.
Questions for McKenzie on this issue?
McKenzie, KDHE is the overriding state agency that, that does, looks over your shoulder, Beth?
I'm pretty positive that this one is KDHE, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the annual review of the Finney County Solid Waste Management Plan and the updates with regard to the list of committee members.
A second?
All second.
Moved and seconded the Board of County Commissioners to approve the annual review of the Finney County Solid Waste Management Plan and the updates made to the list of committee members. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is the Kansas Natural Resources Coalition and it's, our annual membership is up for renewal. And Madam Clerk, you're on the agenda.
Yeah, this is just to get your approval to, as to whether or not you would like to renew your membership with the KNRC.
Five thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. That's no change from prior year.
I'm not a fan. I'll speak, speak first. You know, we went through this organization some ten years back. I, I, I guess I'm, I would decline myself.
Can you think of anything that they've done that's a real benefit to the county?
Exactly.
I was trying to. Well, they, I'm sure they, they presented testimony on the Lesser Prairie Chicken and those type of things. But did you attend their state or Nash or whatever?
I did not. I was not able to be at their last meeting. But they, the thirty-third, thirty by thirty rule and the Lesser Prairie Chicken have been the two points of emphasis this past year. And, and I agree with Dwayne that, well, Larry had the same concerns I did after. did after one of the meetings a few years ago. But from a broader perspective, I think they're, they're looking out for our interest. Can I name more than those two issues this past year? Probably not.
Well, the thoughts are that it looks like we're duplicating lobbying services, basically what they're doing. We, through, we do the same type of lobbying through KLPG and, and Kansas Association of Counties. So.
Yeah, I, and, excuse me, and, and I'm not trying to argue one point versus the other. I think they're, if they were standing here today, they would say that they're working more on a federal level than a state level, and that would probably be the distinction they would make versus KLPG, but, uh, it's up to us.
We have pretty good relationships with our federal representation, so I.
I, I agree, yeah.
Well, one of my concerns is that we spend money for our Kansas Association of Commissioners, we, uh, we spend some money for KLPG, and I get weekly updates. I don't recall receiving a single update, newsflash, newsletter, information with regard to what our five thousand dollars purchased last year. I was a rookie last year, I, we voted to spend the five thousand bucks, but it sounds like we got forty percent of us for sure that aren't going to approve it this year. And I just want to know, what did we get for our money? Because I didn't see it. Yes, sir.
I have voted against funding this ever since they first appeared, and I would offer a motion that would decline to fund the next year's membership.
Second. Been moved and seconded to decline, uh, membership and funding for the Kansas, excuse me, for KNRC as submitted in their voucher. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, my comment would be this, and again, I'm not arguing for or against, but I think the message should be relayed to Tracy Barton about our concerns of duplication and so forth, and if she wants to come and speak to us, we welcome her to come in, but I would not oppose the motion today.
All right, any other further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries, four to one. All right, the last thing that we have on our business agenda is electrical engineer agreement. Robert Reese, Administrator, you're on the agenda, sir, what do you got?
Uh, recall last meeting is that you, uh, for the County Commissioners waived the requirements for electrical engineer, and as per the, um, purchasing policy, um, your County Counselor has reviewed the agreement, the contract, and it is here before you for your signature. That's what I am requesting today, your consideration for the contract. Recall that this electrical engineer is the same one that we utilized for the sewer renovation project, and this project is for the, um, Fairgrounds facility, put in there big building just in quotes for your reference. And, um, anyway, uh, it's here for your consideration.
Thank you. Questions from the commission to the administrator with regard to the proposed engineering agreement and the outline of work that's suggested, additional services, the compensation. Is there a bottom line number on the cost of this?
Fifteen-two on the engineering services for this. Recall that, um, uh, one of the reasons why we're moving forward with this electrical service upgrade for that facility is that we've, uh, we've acquired a hundred thousand dollars, or severed off a hundred thousand dollars from one of the Health Department's grants on this, for this project. We need to spend that, allocate, actually spend it and complete that project by July 31st unless the state extends it. Correct, Shruti?
Shruti Chawla, Health Department Director. Right now, we do not know if the state might be offering an encumbrance extension. The deadline for spending the funds is 31st of July of 2024.
So this is not a general fund expenditure?
That is correct, that is correct.
And the contractor thinks he can get it done by this deadline?
This is part of the process is, is to have the engineer.
Or the engineer.
Do the study, do the study, um, publication, bidding, and so forth to try and get this accomplished by the 31st of July.
Motion?
Mr. Chairman, before a motion is made, it says, just says, sign the contract, Counselor, do we think the Administrator can sign that contract?
I think you can authorize, um, staff to sign it, or the chairman can sign it, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we engage the services of, I can't pronounce those names, of the engineering firm for the exhibition building at a cost of fifteen thousand two hundred dollars to be paid from Fairgrounds CIP fund, and authorize our Administrator to sign that contract.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the engineering. Scope of work for a cost of fifteen-two to be funded from CIP Fairgrounds. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Administrator, you're authorized to sign the contract. Thank you, sir. I hate to do this to you, but we're going to take a seven-minute break, and we'll start again exactly at nine-thirty, um, and ask for the chief or his, uh, designate to give us the seven minutes for a short break. We'll be back in session at nine-thirty. In regard to our monthly incidents reports, and Assistant Chief, I, or Battalion Chief, I noticed that we had four grass fires in this report. Can you comment on those before you give your regular report?
Yeah, as far as the grass fires, I'm aware of two of them. One of them was the, uh, Pierceville Grass Fire. The other one was in Sherlock Township, uh, just east, I should say, south of Jones on Little O Road. It was more residential, it was just a, a yard that had caught fire due to someone burning trash, but it was just a dry enough that it was creeping pretty good, so. Those are the only, the ones that I can recall, the other ones, um, could have just been simple, uh, grass fires that were put out very easily, so.
All right, and so the clerk doesn't scold me, make sure you introduce yourself.
Or me, yes. Kenny Smith with the Garden City Fire Department, I am the Training Officer, Battalion Chief of Training. If you can scroll down, please. All right, so the pie graph, it's just showing you, uh, the majority of our calls encompasses rescue slash EMS, uh, that's typical as far as, um, our call volume goes, it usually encompasses almost half of what we do. The other ones, good intent calls, uh, those range from, uh, dispatched and canceled and routed, um, no incident found, just other, uh, outside of the scope of what maybe wasn't done as far as, uh, like a false call or something like that. Fires, twenty-eight percent, little over twenty-eight percent, uh, nine incidences encompasses that, that can be building fires, grass fires, uh, rubbish fires, anything that we were called to, a smoke investigation, something like that, um, that we needed to provide water for the services. Any other questions on the pie graph one? I guess, before I move on, can you scroll down? That's just more of a breakout, the next, the detailed breakdown is just more of, it breaks it out more. So you can see that we had, uh, two building fires, uh, one of them was pretty significant. It was out on Raceway, uh, it was a shed that was on fire, um, didn't encroach on the residence house, but it was just a barn slash shed that was on fire, um, and it was a total loss on that. The other building fire, I'm not familiar with, and then naturally the grass fires that we talked about. Uh, if you will scroll down again, we'll give you the breakdown of your prospective townships as far as where we, uh, were dispatched to, with the majority being the Garden City Township, um, on there with 21 calls, so.
All right, any other questions for our monthly incident report?
Just for your information, last night in Garfield, had two of their units out there, was a fire in a tree grove along the Pony Creek, uh, wound up bringing the track hoe in to try to knock down some of these burning trees so it wouldn't start the whole area on fire, but just for your information.
Okay, I know with Garfield, since they, they kind of run their first response with grass, and depending on where it's at is whether they call us for assistance, or they call Gray County, or, yeah, Gray County, or, uh, the county up north.
Well, they were able to isolate this to.
Yep.
The area, and then the track hoe did his thing to.
Good deal.
Get it from wind coming up.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One comment, one question, kind of tied to that, I just saw, I, I think it was in Stafford County, uh, a week or so ago, that a burning tree finally fell over and it started a, a significant fire, took them four or five hours to put out, so, uh, those burning trees can be a problem, uh, long after the fire itself.
Yes.
My question is this, on, and I know we just had two, uh, building fire incidents in your report.
Yes.
And you mentioned the one on Raceway.
Yes.
But is, is there, is that electrical, or I mean, what was the cause, or has that been determined?
I don't think it was determined, um, I honestly don't know, and I'm.
Yes, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, no, you're good.
But I guess where I'm going is, is were there code violations or things of that nature, or?
I am not aware of any.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
You do say, you talk about the trees, and so like. You do say, you talk about the trees, and so like our plan in, and I'll give the Pierceville Fire reference. So, there's a lot of yucca that like to burn, and so really our plan after a fire is put out, that we still roam, so we'll go out there two and three times a day for several days to make sure that there isn't any more rekindling, especially around the dry time and the windy time, so.
That's a good point. I hadn't thought about the yucca, but yeah, that was quite a while, yeah. How's your new brush trucks working out for you?
They are amazing. They, they get after it in that sand. They're pretty nice.
That big fire, well, part of it was, and Finney came from Kearney County across.
Yes, we sent one to the Kearney County, Grant County Fire, along with a command element to talk to the airplanes, to drop water and stuff like that, and it has proved very valuable. Just having the bigger tires and the lifting capability to get above the brush and all that good stuff is very, very valuable, so.
Sir?
I do have one more question, Mr. Chairman. What role does the Fire Department play? We, we have a residence out in our subdivision that is a fire hazard because of all the tumbleweeds that have come in and, and dead trees on that lot, and there's concern by the neighbors that if it catches on fire, it's going to be more than just that home, and there's a couple little outbuildings that might go up in flames, that the neighbors, you know, might be exposed to that as well. So, does the, the Fire Department go out, like if we gave you the address, do you go out and contact the resident and say, hey, something needs to be done here, or, or not? What's the role of the department?
So, I'll, I'll give you a little context. On Sage Brush, they came to us as a subdivision, and they wanted a little bit of context on how bad is bad. As far as fire protection, what is, what can, are the steps that they can take to mitigate that? And I believe that's this week that we're presenting to them, as far as maybe steps that they can take, and showing them the value of a little bit of a mitigation that they can do. As far as us going out directly to a resident, I, I can't speak on what the chief would do, but we can, i-if it's a concern, it can definitely be brought up, and maybe there's a way that we can help mitigate that, or as a subdivision, maybe they can come in and ask for assistance on, you know, what can we do to better prepare our land or our houses for better mitigation?
I will pass that on to our committee and let them make that contact if they'd like to. Thank you.
Other questions for the Fire Chief Representative? Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda for staff reports is from Development. Please introduce yourself once again, please.
Good morning again. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So, I have a few updates for you this morning. So, we, it was either last week or late the week before, went out to check on Country Acres. It looks like they're done with their dirt work. We'll be getting with the city to see if they've completed all of the, if everything's ready to go on their side, and probably look at scheduling a final inspection here soon. Then for Randall Estates, Estates, they have began their dirt work right now, and we were out there again, either early last week or the week prior, and it looks like they've already sold some lots as well, so.
Four, so far.
That's what it looked like, yep. And an update for the agreement for the services provided by Neighborhood Development Services. We did meet with the city last week, and we are close to ironing out some of the last few items, and so you should hear probably, hopefully in the next like month, month and a half, you should be having something before you as, as well as the, it before the city. And we will be meeting with them later this week to also, like I said, iron out those last few little things that, that we have left to discuss. And then, just for, so that you're aware, this Wednesday is the Southwest Kansas Highway Officials Association Meeting, and that is in Dodge City this year. Usually it is in Garden City, but this is the first year it's where they're trying something new and going over to Dodge.
It's out at the Western, what are they called?
Western State.
Western State Bank?
Yes, the Exhibition Building.
How many commissioners are-
Big building.
Is anybody else going?
Dwayne and I are wrapped up in stuff here.
We've got the Health Department to give us, we'll meet you that day.
Thank you.
May go. Alright, I've sent an email to you that said I'm, put me down, but I'm wavering a little bit. Yeah, I'm definitely maybe a politician.
Well, Commissioner Jones, thank you for agreeing to attend, and Vice Chairman Jones, if you'd make it, that would be wonderful. Just keep in mind that we will be hearing from KDOT on the twenty-fifth during our special session, which is now turned into a regular session. Anything else from Mackenzie? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other department monthly reports, Mr. Administrator?
No, it stands.
Alright, then your report, sir.
As you just mentioned, we'll have KDOT here next Monday. They'll, in essence, provide you the same update that they're getting tomorrow. Plus, we'll have a few other things to talk about with KDOT, one of them being the bypass route for this bridge replacement that's going on right now. Additionally, you'll have that Alan Richardson from Justice Planners will be discussing a, an agreement with them. This is on the LEC project. We'll have him on, on the screen up here, and we can talk to him about the project. We do have a scope of services for them, for their, for this project, and we'll have Kara review that scope of services prior to the meeting. If I recall correctly, I believe the cost of that service is just under eighty thousand dollars for your consideration. But anyway, we'll, we'll get going on that for next meeting as well. As Commissioner Dris pointed out, we do have this Wednesday, GBA coming in to do the EMS facility, and they'll be up here all, all day working with the departments, and then meeting specifically with the Commissioners in the afternoon. About one-thirty is what I show is that you'll meet with them specifically. So, we should get some pretty good traction on that, that facility moving forward, and first step at really getting a glimpse of, of what it might look like in terms of space, not, not the aesthetics up and so forth. So, we have that, we have that coming up as well. And then, of course, this work session this afternoon will help us in the Administrative Office start to hone in on, on your twenty-five budget. And we've been beginning that process, working with the, the department, so budget season is, is on its way. Any questions for me this morning?
Well, are we having a hard and fast deadline for proposals from Construction Manager Risk on the EMS Health Department building? There was a publication set a deadline of March twenty-fifth.
March twenty-fifth is when we'll, we'll open those at that point in time, then the Commission will make a determination who they want to interview on that, for that process.
Alright, well, I, I'm concerned that, I want to make sure we get as much attention to all of our local contractors that are qualified to be able to handle that building, and in particular, folks in my constituency want to have an opportunity to submit that, and there was some confusion as to whether a one-time publication was sufficient, or whether it should have been more than one time. I believe that there's only a requirement for one.
That is correct, it is required just for one.
Right, so, keeping that in mind, I'll be, if we don't have a local person submit, I'll be asking for an extension to allow all local qualified contractors to have a chance to bid on that contract.
That information is posted on our website for anybody.
And, you know, Madam Clerk, that would be the first place that a thirty-year-old would look, but it's the last place that I would look, and I need to be better at it, and so does the general public.
I think that was just the benefit of the studio audience.
We tried to get it out in as many places as we can, so.
Well, I, I think that it's really important, because in the legal profession, we're still dealing with, you know, the wagon train and the local newspaper, and of course, our local newspaper makes all the circulation of four hundred and fifty people. Certainly, there's more than that of us in the community, and, and website, and Facebook, and so forth, are much more likely to reach a larger volume of people, but yet we're restrained to put it in the newspaper. It's, it's interesting, it's just changing of the times, but that's a good point, that it is posted on our website, and continue to do so, Madam Clerk, because I think it's a very efficient way to do that, and believe it or not, it's expensive to publish in the newspaper. Takes push a button to put it on our website, so. Anything else, sir?
Nothing else.
Questions for the Administrator, Commissioners? County Counselor Report?
Still haven't had an update. I don't know if you have, as far as the, our local court having all of their records back online so that we can start that tax sale that we've been waiting on. As soon as they get back online, I'll have a better timeline of what it is that we're looking at to be able to get that moving forward for you, but just wanted to let you know I didn't have an update from them yet, so.
Well, there's a reason why you don't have an update, is because, just to give everybody an example, the cases that I filed and submitted orders for, I finally got e-filing verification for November twentieth. So, we're making progress, but we're not there yet. So, that's where we're at, and, and the County Counselor has no control over the court systems catching up from the time of their incident until the time they went back online, and we're still waiting.
That would have been approximately a month in, because it was October twelfth was the incident, so just a month in of the twelve weeks.
And we have two and a half months of outage that need to be caught up. Alright, so Sheriff Sale is still on your agenda and on your plate, and we need to begin a timeline, but that timeline can't start until you have access to all of the court records. And I get it. I'm going to move forward with County Commissioner Reports. We do have an executive session that we need to hold, and I want to go through, let me skip then to Board Governance. Is there any updated, dated meetings that need to be discussed or put on?
I, yeah, I did notice that that was not included in your packet, so I do have a printed copy that I will get to you on break.
Alright. Anybody have anything else that they want to make sure that we have on our publication of upcoming meetings?
Well, I guess I could bring it up now. I was going to leave it to our Board Reports, but I, I think each of you may have received a, an email about Kansas Infrastructure Summit in Salina on April twenty-fourth, and I received a special, or not special, excuse me, I received a specific note from Bill Clifford that suggests that we need to have representation at that meeting, and I think he's probably right. So, it's, it said we'd get more information about it. I don't even see the place on here, but it's in Salina, April twenty-fourth.
Are you volunteering to attend on the House of Representatives?
I believe, I, I was thinking I'd put that on my calendar, but let me look real quick.
Anybody else want to, Commissioner Pishney?
I do have it on my calendar, so.
Is there a motion to authorize expenditure funds for Commissioner Pishney to attend the Salina Conference on behalf of-
So moved that allow the Commissioners to attend the conference in Salina.
Reimburse his expenses. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded for Commissioner Pishney to attend April twenty-fourth Highway Conference in Salina, reimburse the expenses there for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anything else on Board Governance? We'll go to Commission Reports. We'll go left to right today. Commissioner Davy Jones?
I don't have much, Mr. Chairman. We, as previously reported, we had a solid waste Plan Committee meeting, and we've already taken action on that here formally, so that's behind us. And then Saturday, I attended the Legislative Coffee and, and saw all of you there, but that's about it.
Commissioner Dris?
I too was at the Coffee, at the Legislative Coffee, and we had Fair Board Meeting, a lot of discussion on the upcoming budget that they're going to present to the county, and most of my stuff is coming on later on this week.
Commissioner Pishney?
Some of the things were regarding hearings that were mentioned at the Legislative Coffee, that we're getting notices on from KAC, KLPG, and so forth, though, with regard to legislative action on valuations of property and two constitutional amendments, hearings and so forth. So, there's a lot of, this is the last week of committee meetings in Topeka, and so there's going to be action fast and furious, and, and we're going to need to be keeping an eye on that as we go forward. One of the things from a legislative standpoint that concerns me is that so many things are being driven by one or two counties, so many issues, so many matters, and the one about foreign ownership of property is all driven by, or mostly driven by, a facility in Johnson County that everybody's upset about because the Chinese own the company, and in my opinion, it's a, a case of where Johnson County did not do its due diligence, and now they're affecting the whole state with some of this legislation. The same thing can be said about some of the other issues, such as revenue neutral and tax lids. Those are being driven by four or five counties that legislators are upset about, and then they're affecting a hundred other counties, in my opinion, negatively. So, I think we need to keep an eye out on, on some of those things. The other things, I would just simply report, I came to the showcase that was here with regard to essential, what, what was termed essential services for cities and counties and so forth. It was well-attended, and I know the note has been sent to the county staff, but I want to publicly say to Jenny and Robert and all the others who helped organize that, the people who set up for that, Joe Coles, who is the voice of showcases, was so pleased with how we responded and hosted that showcase. We'll have other showcases here. Also, Joe has made such a mark for the showcases that he's being invited by the, our District Extension Council to do one in Scott City sometime, and I don't know whether they'll get that worked out, but Joe was taking that to the Showcase Board. I, I too attended the Legislative Coffee, Economic Development, and Planning Commission Meetings in the past month or so.
Commissioner Jones?
Had a Workforce One Meeting. It's interesting, all the services they provide, all of the state, or the, our district, plus other districts in the state, but I know their biggest, one of the biggest ones out here was the, the Dairy Services Company that closed at Hugaton and, and a number of employees they had to contact and try to reroute them. Also, I also attended the Legislative Coffee, and we expect you to-
Also, also attended the legislative coffee, and we expect you to straighten all that out next year.
Hmm, hmm.
So.
Is that in the job description?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we'll know who to call.
You do have my, you do have my number, I know that.
But other than those two, that's extended my work.
Thank you, and Commissioners, if you don't know, my disdain for net revenue neutral statute that's now three years old, which is an anachronistic dinosaur burden upon government and cost to the taxpayers for no specific purpose, I've asked our representatives to insert a line repealing the net revenue statute, and will fully support our representatives and Senator for getting that done. Those of you who attended the legislative coffee know that I have a certain disdain for eastern Kansas folks who think that they should cram down their local problem politics on the rest of the state, and for all of us to have to go through the time and expense of what should be the responsibility of the local government to run efficiently and be responsive to the people. The report that I have, other than grandstanding from the chairman's chair, is that Compass continues to do wonderful things, and I serve on that board with some folks that are really dedicated to providing mental health services. I would encourage Commissioner Dreese and Commissioner Pishney in their leadership positions with regard to the LEC building. I know that we have a lot on our plate with the new construction for the EMS and County Health Building, but the decisions that you make and focus in your committee, obviously will be brought back to us, but we need to make some really important decisions, not just for today, along with the sheriff and other members of that committee. I think, Mr. Administrator, your committee's up to fifteen, sixteen people, that's a hard thing to do, to get a lot of things done, but when it comes to what we're going to do with the LEC, we need to get going, and we need to get it resolved on what's the best course of action and how we're going to best serve our people, not just today, but twenty years from now, in a manner that's suitable to the leadership that this commission provides to all of southwest Kansas. These educational informative showcases was an investment by this commission to let people in Kansas, southwest Kansas, show what we have and encourage our youth to be engaged and employed here. That, that cost is gonna come back to us again this year, and we won't see the benefits of that tomorrow, but in five years, we have a real good chance to see it, and I continue to support it, and I hope the majority of this commission will likewise support showcases in 2025's budget, which we're getting to in the work session coming up. That's my report. I'd like, on a more positive note, to tell our representatives and Representative Minix from counties north of us, and Senator Doll, to thank them for making the trip to hear from the constituency at the legislative coffee like this meeting. The legislative coffees are published on Facebook, you can, if you can't attend, you can still hear what people had to say as to what our representatives were doing, and Senator Moran was here for just a moment before he had to go to the college and promote a very, very good program for our community through Garden City Community College and Kansas Newman University for three new college degree programs. Senator Moran announced one point two million dollars of funding to continue to support and implement the phasing of that educational opportunity right here in Garden City. No longer do our students and young kids and young adults have to leave Garden City in order to achieve education excellence, and I applaud Senator Moran for his leadership and taking the time to come and visit with us and providing the presentation at the community college, and kudos to another haze person, Jessica Byrd, who's been in Garden City for a long time now, who has her doctorate and works for Kansas Newman University, and she was so kind to invite all of us to that program at the community college, however, it had to be at the same time. Did you put me on the clock, Commissioner Dreese?
I did, Lord.
Well, self-imposed timeline, the alarm went off in my brain, and that means that it's time to go into executive session to discuss attorney-client matters. Is there a need for an executive session, County Council?
There is.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go thirty minutes, at least.
All right.
Commission, Administrator, and Attorney.
Does Deputy Administrator involve?
I, I don't think you need to be, that, do you think? Finance?
There's no reason not to, I guess.
Correct. Why not include them, please?
Okay, included.
All right. Motion is, is to go into executive session to include Administrator, Assistant Administrator, and County Counselor. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded for executive session for thirty minutes, include the people, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll reconvene at ten thirty.
I'll second.
It's been moved and segmented to reconvene in regular session and out of executive session. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Back in regular session. I'll confirm that no action was taken on our attorney-client privileged matters. This leads us to the end of our regular session. We have a work session starting shortly. Is there anything else before the county commission today? Please note that our next commission meeting is next Monday, March 25th, where we do have a an agenda already published. We will be hearing from Ron Hall with Kansas Department of Transportation with regard to highway improvements following the meeting in Dodge City. And anything else?
Ellen Richardson, discussion on jail plan.
All right, very good. We will have some more planning on our jail LEC expansion. I wish Commissioner Driz as chair of that committee all the luck of coming during a committee of 15. We need to get going on it. Anything else for the commission?
Just a reminder, I've asked Roxanne Lansink to be my replacement for the canvassing part of next meeting.
All right, very good. And she'll be here?
And she should be here, but then it's up to the four of you to appoint her to that role.
All right, very good. Anything else before the commission? If not, motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
In a second?
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Davy Jones to adjourn. In a second, anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, men.